Twenty twenty-two Planning Commission meeting. Happy holidays to everyone. And it is seven o'clock. Can we start the meeting with a roll call?
Chair Berman.
Present.
Commissioner Domaret.
Present.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Present.
Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Commissioner Wright.
Here.
And Commissioner Domaret, can you lead us in salute to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and for which it is just as natural.
Thank you, Commissioner Domaret. And before we get into administrative business, I'll ask if there's any public comments for the administrative business on the agenda. And just a reminder, for tonight's meeting, there's a dial-in option for making public comments. The phone number is six-five-zero-eight-nine-eight-six-nine-six-five. And once dialed in, enter conference number ID three-eight-three-six-zero-nine-four-four-two, and then press the pound key. Once the chair, myself, has announced the public comment opportunity for the item on which you wish to comment, press star five to raise your hand. City staff will then identify you by the last four digits of your phone number when it is your turn to speak. Once you're called on to speak, press star six to unmute yourself. Wait a few seconds, and then begin speaking. Be sure to mute any other broadcast you may be watching, such as the Channel twenty-six or live-stream coverage of the meeting. And also, dial-in instructions and ways to raise your hand if you are dialing in are shown on the screen. We have one caller. Any hands raised on the phone? All right. Then I will close that public comment opportunity and move on to approval of the order of agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the order of agenda? Commissioner Ferguson?
I would move we approve the order of agenda.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Domaret.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Approval of minutes. So we have the December fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or perhaps a motion to approve these minutes? Commissioner Godwin?
I have no comments, but if everyone else is agreeable, I would move we approve these minutes as entered.
All right, we have a motion. Commissioner Godwin, do you happen to have a second?
I do. I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Go ahead and vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
All right, designation of liaison, we have none. And now on to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issues within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. And please refer to the screen for a reminder on dial-in options and ways to raise your hand if you are dialing in. Looks like we have no hands raised, so I will close the oral communications portion of the meeting. And on to consent items. We have one consent item tonight, and it is file number two thousand twenty-two dash zero-one-zero. Report on Planning Director Approval of Administrative Coastal Development Permit, CDP four-three-six dash two-two. Filed by applicant Brian Fox of Five Design for construction of a one thousand one hundred and ninety-five-square-foot accessory dwelling unit with a two-hundred-and-fifty-eight-square-foot garage on a five thousand seven hundred and fourteen-square-foot lot at one thirty-one Brighton Road, Assessor Parcel Number zero-one-six dash three-zero-one dash zero-six-zero. Sequo recommendation is not applicable, and recommended action is receive and file. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Planning Director Christian Murdock. This application is an administrative item, reporting out Planning Director's approval of an administrative coastal development permit, or CDP. This is a requirement in the municipal code and in our local coastal program for all types of administrative CDPs. Typically, for administrative CDPs other than accessory dwelling units, three commissioners could vote to invalidate the administrative CDP and thus require a regular coastal development permit. In this instance, because it's an accessory dwelling unit and due to the provisions in state law, there's no opportunity to invalidate, but we're still reporting out, and so no action is required of the commission this evening.
All right, thank you, Planning Director Murdock. And I'm wondering if we have the applicant present? Would the applicant like to speak?
You want to kind of do more information apart?
All right, sounds good, noted. So then I'll bring it to the commission for any questions. We have the applicant present. Or, yeah. Or we could go straight on to public comment if there's no questions. Commissioner Ferguson?
I have a procedural question. I guess I don't understand the distinction between an administrative CDP and a CDP, and then, I guess, are there other types of administrative CDPs other than ADUs which don't require planning commission review?
Yeah, great question, Commissioner Ferguson. So there are essentially three types of coastal development permits. There's the regular coastal development permit, which we just referred to as a CDP. There's administrative coastal development permits, which I'll get to again in a second. And then there are emergency coastal development permits, which the commission recently received a report out where I approved an emergency CDP for exigent circumstances that don't allow for the regular processing time of an ordinary CDP. Instances of administrative CDPs, there's a narrow category of project types and geography in which the planning director can approve administrative CDP. Coastal development permits are one of them. Other instances are relatively minor projects, for the most part, located outside of the appeals jurisdiction for coastal development permits. And so, in this instance, even though this project is located in the coastal zone, it is eligible for an administrative coastal development permit. And I reviewed the application. We provide public notice. There's no public hearing because it's an accessory dwelling unit. Then I evaluated all of the information and granted the approval. And the final step in this instance is for me to report that out to the commission.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to public comment on this consent item. So I'll open the opportunity for a public comment. If you are present and want to provide a public comment, I believe there are slips at the back of the room you could fill out. For those that are calling in, I am opening the public comment period on this agenda item. For those who are dialed in by phone and wish to make a public comment, press star five to raise your hand. City staff will then identify you by the last four digits of your phone number when it is your turn to speak. Once you are called on to speak, press star six to unmute yourself. Wait a few seconds, and then begin speaking. Be sure to mute any other broadcast you may be watching, such as Channel twenty-six or the live-stream coverage of the meeting. All right, looks like we have no call-in hands raised, and we have no attendees in person that wish to provide a public comment, so I'll close the public comment period on this item and bring it back to the commission for deliberation.
Chair Berman, there's no formal action required, so a consensus of the commission, you could just note that you've accepted and received and filed a report.
Oh, yes, thank you. So I guess we have no further questions, and we received the report. And I guess we could close this item then, seeing no hands raised. All right, thank you. Thank you for being present, Mr. Applicant, Mr. Applicant or owner representative. Thank you. All right, on to consideration items. File number two thousand twenty dash zero-zero-two. Applicant request for extension of expiration date or site development, for site development permit PSD eight-four-eight dash twenty. Subdivision SUB two-four-six dash twenty. Use permit UP one-two-two dash twenty. Parking exception PE one-nine-zero dash twenty. And variance PV five-two-nine dash twenty. To construct a three-story mixed-use building with one thousand three hundred and twenty-four square feet of commercial space located on the ground floor and five residential units located on the second and third floors on a nine thousand five hundred and forty-seven-square-foot vacant lot located at three forty Waterford Street. Assessor parcel number zero-zero-nine dash zero-five-eight dash zero-four-zero. Recommended sequo action is exempt pursuant to Sequo Guideline Section one-five-zero-six-one B three. Recommended action is extend site development permit PSD eight-four-eight dash twenty. Subdivision SUB two-four-six dash twenty. Use permit UP one-two-two dash twenty. Parking exception PE one-ninety dash twenty. And variance PV five-two-nine dash twenty for eighteen months. Staff report, please.
Thank you, and good evening again, Chair and Honorable Commissioners. Planning Director Christian Murdock. The Planning Commission approved this mixed-use project consisting of ground-floor commercial area and five residential units in a three-story mixed-use building in November of twenty twenty. As has been the case with many projects approved in that time period, the applicants, I believe, have incurred unexpected delays due to the coronavirus pandemic, supply chain, and other issues. And this applicant, as a result of that, has requested an extension to the original approval timeline for the tentative subdivision map and associated permits. This particular project site, if the commission recalls, is located at the intersection of Waterford Street and Monterey, just south of the Car Wash along Highway One. And it was the subject of discussion in large part due to the mechanical parking lift and other architectural features of the project site. So at this point, the applicant has expressed interest in continuing with the project, but has requested the additional time, as I noted, and staff recommends approval of an eighteen-month extension. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And is the applicant present for this agenda item? All right. The applicant is not present, or perhaps are they called in? Okay. So are there any questions for staff, for Christian?
I have one quick question.
Commissioner Wright.
Christian, just because I'm still relatively new to this, and I've noticed a number of extensions, and it's completely understandable, but do we have, do we have a limit on the number of extensions that we are willing to provide? Because we've had a lot of significant changes with the new plan that we've gone over. There's a lot of potential different effects for that. I'm not talking about this specific instance, but in general, is there a limit on the number of extensions that are available to people?
Yes, so the answer will depend on the type of project and the permits associated with it. I'll start first with the example of this application and the extension requests you've also considered recently. They've all included what's known as a tentative subdivision map, which is a particular type of approval provided in the Subdivision Map Act, which is state law and implemented through the City of Pacifica's subdivision standards in Title ten of the municipal code. Both of those provisions in the Subdivision Map Act and the municipal code provide a limit of up to three years of extensions for tentative subdivision maps. So in this instance, we've recommended eighteen months or a year and a half, so roughly half of the maximum allowable extension period. So this applicant, if this extension's granted, for instance, could come back and request another eighteen-month extension. And the city could grant that, or some lesser period, or if there's very good cause and evidence to support it, perhaps not grant the extension. But that's, I think, a position that's, needs to be justified with the appropriate reasoning. For projects not involving subdivision, tentative subdivision maps, those extension provisions are really governed by local procedures and regulations, so any provisions in the municipal code and any conditions of approval imposed on the project. So most commonly, for projects without tentative subdivision maps, you'll either see a two-year or a one-year initial approval period. Typically, two years outside of the coastal zone, typically one year in the coastal zone because coastal development permits are limited to one-year approval periods. And then most commonly, we have a standard condition of approval that allows one, one-year administrative approval by the planning director. If the planning director determines that no material circumstances have changed, which would have likely influenced the project approval in the first instance. Where that approval, that extension for the one year has already been granted, an applicant is really only left with one option, which is to either, two options, let the approvals expire, or seek an amendment to the condition of approval that established that limitation. So that's relatively rare, which is the good news in the last several years. These types of extensions used to be much more common in Pacifica, but we've really pressured applicants to carry out their projects. So most of the time, they're undertaking their projects with that single one-year planning director-level extension. And I can only think of one case, there may be a small number of others, where an applicant has actually come in to amend that condition and ask for even more time. So that's become the exception, not the rule. And again, if the planning commission has good reason and evidence as to why an extension is not appropriate, such as material changes in the circumstances, perhaps some really significant change in the zoning or general plan, then that may be a situation where the commission determines that an extension's not appropriate, or I should say, an amendment to that condition of approval, by further extension.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll go ahead and ask a couple questions. I recall when this was presented to Planning Commission before that we had quite a bit of discussion on the overhead lines adjacent to the project, right at the front edge. And given our work on the recent general plan and just the encouraging language there for applicants to underground electrical lines or overhead utility lines, is, do we have the ability to perhaps amend a condition of approval and make that a requirement now?
So that's something we would have to analyze very specifically, City Attorney's Office, and that's not an answer I'd be able to give you tonight, and likely even if the city attorney was here. For the most part, these types of extensions, and particularly with tentative subdivision maps, the city is limited to acting on those in reliance on the regulations that were in effect at the time the tentative subdivision map was deemed complete. So in that instance, for this project, well before adoption of the two thousand forty general plan. So I think it's quite unlikely the commission would be able to do that unless there was some other significantly compelling public reason for that, some increased hazard that could not have been known, or some other, you know, unusual circumstance. And we haven't identified any such circumstance for this particular extension request.
Okay, thank you. All right, not seeing any other lights, I will go ahead and open public comment on this agenda item. So as a reminder, for those who are dialed in by phone and wish to make a public comment, press star five to raise your hand. City staff will then identify you by the last four digits of your phone number when it is your turn to speak. Once you are called on to speak, press star six to unmute yourself. Wait a few seconds, and then begin speaking. Be sure to mute any other broadcasts you may be watching, such as Channel twenty-six or the live-stream coverage of the meeting. Are there any public comments, either in person or hands raised on the phone? All right. No public comments are evident, so then I will close the public comment opportunity for this agenda item and bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Commissioner Ferguson?
A couple things. First, I had a question for staff, and I do remember this approval years ago. I'm not a hundred percent clear, and I couldn't figure out with some basic research which portions of Highway One are designated as scenic highway and which portions are not. Obviously, if that portion was, we decided when we approved this that it wasn't, but I was hoping that maybe Christian would know off the top of his head which portions of Pacifica's Highway One are and are not, because I know in some areas they are, triggers different things.
That's right. So to my knowledge, no portion of Highway One in Pacifica is designated as a scenic highway. I believe the entirety may be eligible for designation, but there are additional criteria that have not been undertaken to actually achieve that formal designation. And so that, I think, to your point, has relevance for the environmental determination and the categorical exemption that was used for this project.
Sure. I just know that there are portions of one that are, and I didn't know if any parts here were. I was just curious. That's my only question.
Any other questions or perhaps a motion? Commissioner Ferguson?
Sorry, one more thing I meant to bring up. I do recall immediately following our approval of this project that I saw that the property was enlisted for sale with an approved development permit. I don't know if that is something we're allowed to take into account as far as an extension, if this is just being used to leverage a different sale price and not get to the, I guess, the point of the approval of these coastal development projects, if that's something the commission is interested in talking about. I know it was on the market for some time, so maybe the extension is just a portion of that. I would like to see this project built, that's why we approved it in the first place, but I'll leave that to my fellow commissioners to discuss.
Thank you for bringing it up, Commissioner Ferguson. I think that's an interesting topic to discuss. I guess what our action tonight would be, would purely be to re-instill the approval that the project already has, rather than progressing it to another new approval. So I'm wondering, Mr. Murdock, do you have an opinion on the matter?
Sure, I'll say it's a general matter. Land use approvals such as this run with the land, as it's called, and so even if ownership changes, the approval that's granted and the rights conveyed with a land use permit are irrespective of the particular property owner. And so, to me, it's not an issue of concern or of note, except if, you know, perhaps there was a pattern of sale after sale after sale, and that was the justification given for needing more time, maybe that wouldn't be a sufficient justification. But in this instance, it does appear that the property ownership may have changed since the initial approval. I don't have full information on that, but in any case, it doesn't really have direct bearing on land use approvals as it relates to the city's action in this instance.
I guess I had a different take on it, that there might not have been an intention of building the project ever, that it was more of a, an action that was taken to increase the value of the property for sale and not actually to complete the project. And if that would have bearing on, with the extension.
Yeah, I don't have any information, you know, as to the initial applicant and owner's intentions. What I can say is, it's relatively common for applicants to seek extensions of this sort, particularly in the challenging last couple of years, as we've experienced with a number of projects. And so, to me, even if we had evidence of that, you know, a single property ownership change wouldn't necessarily be unusual. For instance, the prior extension granted for thirteen thirty-five Adobe one or two meetings ago, that underwent an ownership change as well, you know, since its approval to the extension approved by the commission. So again, it's relatively common, and sometimes there are a variety of factors other than, you know, intent to increase the sale price, that could affect the original property owner's ability to actually carry through financing, personal issues, market conditions, you know, et cetera.
Understood.
Another question on that, has there been any visibility of action in submitting a building permit for the project?
I would have to check. I don't recall doing a plan check on it. The individual, who I believe is the architect that submitted this extension request on behalf of the property owner, did indicate they were looking to make some minor material changes to the building, and so it sounds like they are getting down to the very refined detail level in developing the project concept. But I'd have to check, if you want to give me a moment, to see if we've actually received a building permit.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
I am aware that a couple different addresses have been used for this project. There's three forty Waterford, which the city has been using. I think there may have been prior correspondence from the owner using the address, which I don't have immediately available, so it's possible it came in under a different address than I'm searching for. But at this time, I'm not able to confirm that we have received a building permit.
Okay, well, thank you for looking.
Yes, I just have...
Commissioner Wright?
I have just one more quick administrative question. Does the fee structure for extensions typically cover the expense of staff to review these types of applications?
Yes, it does, and the fee is actually designed with the typical amount of staff time needed to analyze the change in circumstances that need to be evaluated to prepare the report and bring it to the Planning Commission. If the commission were to look to request some other in-depth analysis in relation to this, then likely the fee would not be sufficient to cover that additional staff time.
Are there any other questions or perhaps a motion? Commissioner Wright?
I'd like to move that we grant the extension for eighteen months, as per staff's recommendation.
Thank you for that motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Domaret?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right. So that brings us to communications. So let's do commission communications first. One item, I know this is our Commissioner Domaret's last meeting of the year, and for his term, as he's moving on to a different commission that we're all proud of, proud of him for, and we enjoy, we enjoyed our time with you, Commissioner Domaret, and we are happy that we had one more meeting in person to say farewell.
Thank you, thank you so much. I'd like to express my thanks to the city council for giving me this opportunity to be on this commission. In a lot of my discussions with people on the street, very few of them really understand the workings of the city. And I'd just like to publicly state that the people of the city should be proud of our, of our community, of our planning staff, of Public Works and everybody, because they do a hell of a job. And unless you get involved in something like this, you really don't see those inner working. And so I'm very proud to be, to have been part of this team and all the great people on this team, and I know you guys will continue to do a fabulous job, and hopefully others in the community will want to volunteer and go through the process to get on some of these committees and commissions within the City of Pacifica, because it's a fabulous experience, and you really get a better idea of really what it takes to run, run the community. So again, thank you for the experience, and you never know, after four years with the other commission, I may come back. So thank you again so much.
Thank you. Any other commission communications? All right, on to staff communications.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. First, I'd like to introduce one of our new staff members in the Planning Department, Katie Snogras, who is joining us as an Assistant Planner. Katie recently graduated from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo with a degree in Environmental Management and Protection. She also has a background as a student biologist with Caltrans and brings a bunch of helpful experience to the Planning Department, as well as operating our dial-in public comment system tonight. So welcome, Katie. We're very happy to have you. Last Thursday, the City Council undertook its annual reorganization and appointed Council Member Big Stick to serve as mayor and Council Member Vatalas to serve as Mayor Pro Tem, and newly-elected Council Member Bowles was also sworn in, along with Council Members Beer and Beckmeyer, who were re-elected for their second terms. I want to announce the holiday closure of City Hall. So City Hall offices will be closed for the holidays, beginning Friday, December 23, and will reopen on Tuesday, January 3. During that closure, most Planning Department services will be unavailable. Excuse me. However, building inspection services will continue, and so anybody requiring a building inspection during that period should call the inspection hotline, as they would usually. The time that inspections will be unavailable will be simply on the observed Christmas and New Year holidays, but not the entirety of the holiday closure. Also related to the holiday period, I want to announce that we will be canceling the first Planning Commission meeting in January, due to when that meeting's falling relative to the holiday closure and the observed holiday. And so, the first Planning Commission meeting will actually be on Tuesday, January 17. So for folks that may want to come and make public comment or otherwise participate, that'll be their next opportunity at the Planning Commission. And lastly, staff would like to thank Commissioner Domarat for his service on the Planning Commission. It's been wonderful getting to know you. Came at a really important time when we were working on the general plan update, Shore Park specific plan, and many other things, and it's been really great to have your interest and your intellect and experience and your support during those processes. So thank you so much, and best of luck on the San Mateo County Harbor Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, Planning Director Murdock, and welcome, Katie. So that brings us back to the Commission, and before we go to adjournment, I'd like to read the following. Anyone agreed by the action the Planning Commission, I'm sorry. Anyone agreed by the action of the Planning Commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the City Council. If any of the above actions are challenged in court, issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Judicial review of any city administrative decision may be had only if a petition is filed with the court, not later than the 90th day following the date upon which the decision becomes final. Judicial review of environmental determinations may be subject to a shorter time period for litigation. In certain cases, 30 days following the date of final decision. And with that said, do we have a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Godwin?
I move re-adjourn this meeting in the Planning Commission.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Domarat?
I'll second the motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you, and happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you.